March first, and it's just a little after six o'clock. Welcome to the city council meeting, Gastonia City Council, and certainly we're glad you're here. We're gonna move along. White still sort of starts that being daylight. I like that, and of course, that's gonna get better. Um, is that on? Okay, I'm sorry. But at this time, if I'd like to ask you to have the opening prayer with me, after which we'll stand for the pledge to the flag. If, I would like before I start to say that, and of course, we always, there's so many people that we, in the community, that we always certainly try to remember, if not everyone, and I'd like for everyone to have a certainly keeping your thoughts and prayers in the council, and I'm sure you will. It was only a few months ago, at, I believe, over at the courthouse, at the podium, that Kathleen Boyce was there in behalf of the Girls on the Run, I think it is, and that is, of course, Reverend Dr. Richard Boyce's wife for many years, and just went out as mayor of Belmont, and former pastor, first presbyteer in Belmont. She's been very, very sick, and so I want us to, hopefully, she's going to go in the rehab and get better on her muscles and her legs, and she's a, what she loves the most is running, and so I think if you saw that article, you saw that. She's a wonderful, wonderful person. She was here that night with Ann Maloney, and we've always supported her. If everyone bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of gathering here today. We thank you for the privilege of serving the city of Gastonia. We ask that you be with this city, with this county, with this state, and we ask that you be with all the people that are involved with it, all the employees, and be with their families, and a special blessing for Kathleen Boyce, and we lift that to you in your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion, is motion, second, is all in favor, raise your hand. Right hand, please. Okay, item D is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January the nineteenth. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, I haven't been reading these out, but I see she's handling it well. Okay, discussion, all in favor, please, raise your hand. Thank you. The item E is a presentation for a request for in-kind services. Speaking of girls on the run, the presentation is by Steve Avria, Board Vice Chair of Girls on the Run. Steve? That's the Steve you've been looking for, isn't it? Okay, I saw him right there. Thank you, Steve. Glad to have you.
Counsel, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for requesting those prayers and the continued support for Kathleen Boyce. We hope to see her real soon. On behalf of Girls on the Run, which I do serve on the board, we are asking once again for in-kind services for our spring 5K that's held at Leinberger Park each year. We have about fifteen hundred to two thousand participants, including up to nine hundred third, fourth, and fifth grade girls all throughout the county. So we'd love the continued support to have our traffic areas closed down, someone that leads the race, serves as our sweeper at the end, and just continues to be that support that we can have such a large event, one of the biggest in Gastonia.
Okay, gentlemen, this is Exhibit E one, and...
I move for the motion.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion or questions? Okay, thank you very much. We've all had a chance to read it. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Steve, it was tough.
Thank you. Hope to see you out there volunteering or running. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. No one has signed up for public expression, which is the next item on the agenda. So we'll go into the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, please, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Didn't I say that? Okay. Well, let's see, who's next? The monthly financial report for February sixth, twenty sixteen. This is item six, presentation by Mrs. Melody, the Director of Financial Services. Melody?
Good evening. The financial report before you tonight is the January two thousand sixteen report. In this report, the January report is important because January is the month when we receive the majority of our tax revenue. So if we'll turn quickly to page three of your general fund, you can see the very first category in revenues is your add valorem taxes. We've received about eighty-nine percent of our budget, or twenty-six million nine oh three, and we're about two hundred and forty-three thousand above expectations to date. On page four of the general fund, general fund, the bottom of that page, we're currently a million three sixty-six below our five-year average in the general fund. Your electric fund on page five is operating well right now. Revenues exceed expenditures by three million two thirteen. And on page six, we're currently one million one thirty-one two oh seven above the five-year average in electric. Your water and sewer fund is performing really well. Currently, revenues exceed expenditures by four million one twenty-four. And your water and sewer fund is currently a million five seventy-six above your five-year Now, the next fund is the Stormwater Utility Fund, and I think I told you last month, we've highlighted that appropriated fund balance line. We appropriated two hundred thousand dollars in this fund and transferred that out to capital projects for the Stormwater Utility. On page ten, your expenditure, that transfer out, is reflected, but that revenue, we are not showing. Typically, we don't know if we need to use that fund balance until the end of the year, so we're currently a hundred and thirty-four thousand four sixty below the five-year average in the Stormwater Fund. Page eleven is solid waste, and solid waste is very similar to Stormwater. We appropriated fund balance in the solid waste fund for two pieces of equipment, two large pieces of equipment, that leaf machine, and also to hire a crew. So again, that revenue isn't showing as received, but the expenditures are happening. So if you look on page twelve, currently it's seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand below. If we had received that four hundred and ninety-nine, almost five hundred thousand in fund balance, we would only be about two hundred and fifty-seven thousand below the five-year average in Stormwater. Your transit fund, expenditures exceed revenues by two hundred and fourteen thousand. We have one outstanding grant reimbursement request of ninety-eight thousand seven hundred in the Transit Fund. Currently Transit is seventy-two thousand five fifty-nine above the five-year average. And on the last page, your operating budget summary, we've spent roughly fifty-five point six percent of our operating budget through fifty-eight percent of the year, so we're about two point seven percent below expectations. Any questions?
Questions, Mel?
Yes, sir. I continue to be amazed at how close we are with half the year gone, and to be so close to what you planned a year ago. It just shows how much time and thought is put into each individual line item in a budget. It's, again, kudos to your staff and you, and y'all just continue to amaze me.
Thank you.
Well put. Any other questions, comments? Okay. We'll move on to the item seven for you, please. Award of Financial Audit Contract for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, contract subject to the approval of the city council, the local government commission, and the availability of appropriation. Melody?
The item number for you tonight is an LGC required annual approval of our audit contract. We bid our audit services every four, we have a four-year contract, and this will be the fourth year of that contract. So we bid it for like a four or five-year period, but the LGC does require that we, the governing body, approve that contract annually. This year, our audit is gonna be fifty-two thousand five fifty. That's the same amount as it was the year before. Like I said, this is the fourth year of a four-year contract, and we do have the option to extend it one year. So staff would recommend you approve the LGC required annual contract.
Okay, this is all in Exhibit eight, please. Is there a motion? Is there questions? I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Melody, with the audit, do we get a new set of eyes looking at it, a new person coming in, checking it out? That's my question on it, because I just want...
We do. We've had a four-year contract with Martin Starnes. Two years into it, they changed audit teams, audit managers, and so we had a fresh new team working on our audit. Even though they were from the same firm, we had new people.
Okay, that's, yeah, because that's a real concern. You get the same people in there time and time again, they just pretty much look at what they did last time.
Right.
And having new people come in, they just have different ways and different modes of doing things. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Jim took my question.
Oh.
You know, by...
I'm good. I would like to make the motion that we go with the recommendation by staff for hiring Starnes and Martin Starnes and associates for auditing.
Second.
Second, there, okay. That was seconded by Dr. Curlin. Any discussion, any other questions? All in favor of the motion, please. Thank you. Thank you, Melody. Excuse me, item eight is a resolution for application to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program for additional funding for the South Fork Phase Two Water Plant. Presentation by Mr. Matt Bernhardt, Director of Public Works and Utilities. This is item eight. Gentlemen, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you're hopefully aware, we've been working for some time on the South Fork Phase Two wastewater project. It's a somewhat complex, multi-funding source, multi-partner project that is to connect Far Yarns and the town of McAdenville to the Gastonia or Two Rivers system by force main, so that they can eliminate their wastewater plants, and it would be a benefit to everyone involved. It's a good, good project with a lot of effort behind it, but during the time that we've been in design and survey and all the preparatory stuff, the construction marketplace has moved as activity has picked up, and we're fairly certain that the original estimate that we had for the project at the start of two point eight million is probably now more in the range of three point four million, and it's just one of the hard realities of doing projects of this size in this marketplace. Fortunately, we are eligible for up to three million in funding from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, formerly NC Deaner, and we currently have two point two million in loans, in zero percent interest loans from DEQ, and also a six hundred thousand dollar loan from North Carolina Clean Water Management Trust Fund. But since we're eligible for up to three million, that would give us an additional eight hundred thousand dollars towards the project to help close that gap and make sure that we can successfully complete the project on behalf of all the partners involved. So what we have, however, to do that is we'll have to submit a new application to the state, and the attached resolution, which the staff recommends, respectfully recommends approval of, would be to go with that application, and is one of the requirements. So our recommendation is for the approval of that resolution, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Questions? Mr. Trump.
Matt, the monies that we're getting from the county, out of that twenty million dollars, is any, is any of that going toward this particular project?
No, sir. The city did receive several township grants for a number of projects in the water and sewer area. We're partnering with the town of Ranlow for a conversion that basically gets them out of the water in the Smyre Community, which is in Gastonia, but has an old Ranlow water system in it that's in bad shape. So we're working with our partners in Ranlow for that project, and we also are working with the town of Dallas on a township grant that they received to establish an emergency sewer interconnection with our system as a backup for their plant, and so both of those are in the works as well, but we did not receive funding directly for this project. A application was prepared and submitted on behalf of McAdenville, but with a very crowded list, it unfortunately didn't make.
And that's what I was thinking of, and I couldn't remember if it got approved by them or not, but I knew I had read it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
The township that had that particular grant in it was probably the most crowded as far as the number of things for consideration of funding, and unfortunately, it just, you know, it didn't make it, so...
Well, we appreciate what we got, though.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Dr. Curlin?
Matt, tell me about this. Okay, so, you know, the cost increases, and we're gonna borrow more money. This all comes back to the Two Rivers system, correct?
Yes, sir.
How does the, how does the cost get, you know, divided between Far and McAdenville and Two Rivers and all that?
We have agreements in place that were approved by the board some time back with Far and with McAdenville that will essentially pay the loan funds back over time. We're also looking at additional funds for the project. There's some other possibilities that we're looking at, but it will be paid back over time by Far Yarns and McAdenville.
So does this impact their rates?
We have not considered a rate increase specific to this, but we are still working on the project. There is a possibility of some additional funding that could be obtained that might provide some relief, and as we nail down and kind of complete those possibilities, we'll be bringing those back to you for consideration.
Okay. Yes. Gallagher?
Matt, I wanted to ask you, why was the, why was there any increase? Was it a delay in the project being completed or anything of that nature?
This, this project is probably one of the longest-running ones that we have. It's been through a lot of twists and turns. It actually originally started with the town of Cramerton and was something that we inherited when we did the consolidation with Cramerton, and it almost, we almost lost it when the economic meltdown occurred. We were able to manage to keep it together. We then went through a very challenging event in that the engineering company that we inherited, when we inherited the project, shut its doors in the middle of the design, and we lost a good portion of the design that had been done to that point, as well as all the survey data. So we basically had to start from scratch on that. Events that were totally beyond our control, but we've managed to overcome those, and I do want to say, with regard to Dr. Curlin's very good question, the flows will pay back the loans that we've received. The grant obviously doesn't have to be paid back, but the period of time that it takes for that payback is a little longer than we'd like for it to be, so we're working on to see if there's some additional grant funding that may be able to shorten that. And there may be other options. The staff is, is working on that, and when we get those solidified, we will be bringing them back.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
When is this, when is this fixing to be completed?
We just submitted the plans and specifications to the state for review and permitting. Our hope is to get out on the street and get it out to bid just as soon as we can.
You didn't bring your crystal ball with you.
No. You never know how long that'll take. Sometimes it's fairly short, sometimes it's fairly lengthy. This is a good project. It is hugely important to Far Yarns and to McAdenville, and it will be a good partnership project. Both of their wastewater plants are, you know, not in the greatest of shape. We did have, we do have an agreement with the county to backstop the project. Were there to be any loss of flows from either McAdenville or Far Yarns, but we'll have to talk with them about the renewal. That's one of the discussions that's ongoing of that due to the length of time that the project has, has gone on. So we haven't lost the project. It's still good. We do have two point eight million in funding. We just got a little bit of additional work to do.
I make a motion that we recommend, you want to say anything?
Present resolution.
Present the resolution.
Right ahead.
Yeah, recommendation, present the resolution from staff.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If I may, Mr. Munn, just for one minute, ask Rusty Boston, come up, and let me ask you two quick questions, please, sir, for the council and the city, because you got the answers.
Yes, sir.
It's good working with, you know, these Clemson guys, and they always have the answer. Two concerns that have been addressed in the last day, or asked in the last couple days, Myrtle School Road and Davis Park Road.
Yes.
The comments made to me, this, your way, the comments made is that the question, it was just a question, are they working on Davis Park Road? There's nobody there, they're all up at Myrtle School, and that makes me think, that's where you start to come down, but I mean, what's the status, please, on that?
So we've had a very wet winter.
Yeah.
The ground is not drying out, so there's certain types of work that you simply don't do in the winter. The southern portion where the contractor had been working, they've got all the underground stuff done, which is the work that you can do in the winter. There's really nothing that they can do now except push mud around, and that just doesn't really serve a purpose. So instead, their crews are moving north towards Franklin, and they're doing more and more of the water line and some storm drain work and doing work underground.
So and make their way back down, I guess.
Yes, sir. Once all the underground is done, then the next thing would be the grading, which is, you know, that's much more obvious, and that's...
Well, sure.
Yep.
They've done a lot. They've got the sidewalks, and Davis, down to almost Abalo there, and so, but I just wanted to be able, as we all do, would like to be able to answer that.
It's very similar on, on the east side, Tiptman Road. That contractor essentially got all the underground work done, and there's really nothing for them to do now until the ground dries up for them to do that final grading and then build those lanes. So that's just where we're at.
That's, that's not good for about eleven, twelve o'clock tonight. It's gonna hit, it's gonna hit again, so...
Yes, sir.
And then go away by the time we get up in the morning. But, well, you've answered my question on that. The second question is, I had, we had requested, and I think you were gonna have a study down or something regarding speed humps on Midwood Drive.
Yes, sir. That's the... Midwood, Westbrook.
Westbrook's what I meant, Midwood is run with Westbrook.
Yes, sir. There's actually a lot of activity out there. I think we had a request from the school itself to put speed humps on, what was that?
The street beside the school.
Edgewood, right beside the school. We, unfortunately, we haven't made any progress on those to date. We're about six requests behind with our counts and our analysis. We're working that direction, and we should be there as we bring some more staff on to fill some vacancies.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item nine is the twenty sixteen Strategic Planning Workshop Takeaways, presentation by Mr. Munn, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I passed this out at the last council meeting. I wanted to go over a few things and some of the things where I can report back to you progress, and also let you know that one of the things that I got from finance today was all the budget stuff, and so it's about that high, and all next week, we're gonna be going through the budget. And when we did the mayor council retreat or strategic planning workshop, we were very aspirational, I think, as a group. We wanted to do a lot of things, and I knew as we were walking out of there, now the challenge will be to quantify all of this and bring this back to the city council at the end of this month. So this is the first of March, but it's the twenty-ninth of March is when we have the budget outlook, and we'll try to quantify all of this, and we will, of course, have that process that we do all the time, that there are many great projects that are out there, but only so much that we can fund this year, and we'll look again next year and the year after that. But to move forward with the, some of the strategic takeaways, first was compensation, and we are preparing ourselves going forward with the merit system, looking at that in next year or the year beyond. The market studies, we are making progress with that really across the board, but it's the final one, which is to consider an early March across-the-board increase. If you remember, we had that discussion as a group, and we said, well, at the end of the meeting, we would come back and revisit that. Well, we did so much work that day that we ended the meeting, but we really didn't come back around to that. I will tell you that, you say, well, how much does this cost to do it early? And it's two hundred and eighty-seven thousand and thirty-one dollars to do it early. That is, in other words, doing, having this so that it's effective March nineteenth, because low and behold, when we said early March, this is about as early March as you can do right, right now.
Let's just start.
So the whole cost is four hundred and fifty-six thousand, but some of it is with the other funds. Every time we do salary increases or any of the compensation increases, insurances, it always hits the general fund the hardest. Utility funds, it's a smaller, much smaller piece as a percentage in their budgets. So sixty-two, almost sixty-three percent of the budget isn't a general fund. So how much does it cost for a year of that? And this is, would be, you know, we suggested a three percent increase for all the employees. That would be nine hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. I say that number, but it isn't, won't ever be that number, because our workforce is constantly changing every day. Someone's leaving, someone's coming in, so at a point in time, that's what that was. So we believe we have the funding for that for next year, but the question is, do you want to do an early funding for it? Now, if you do an early funding for it, it does commit you, of course, if you're already into three percent, that has to carry through. So this would be signaling really to the workforce that, you know, that what that increase would be this year, and actually advancing it, and having it start in March, then it would actually hit their paycheck in April, April eighth. So that was what we were going to turn around and back, and get back to, but I wanted to share that with the council, because it is the first of March, and if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Mr. Gallagher?
We have the money available, the two hundred and eighty-seven thousand thirty-one dollars for the early increase, for the March nineteenth increase of three percent.
Yeah, I mean, this is not, it's not budgeted, but it is available through our fund balance, because again, remember when we did our fund balance? We did very well. All of the revenues that could break our way did break our way. Some of them were one-time, and others are multi-year, so we're in a very strong position. It's actually the most in terms of fund balance that we've ever had, and so... And so, we are in a strong, this would, the advance is a one-time event. Now, the $900,000, that's an ongoing. Once you're there, you're there all the time. In fact, the next year builds on it. And it is a, it's the compounded one. And that's the more serious one. But the advance itself, again, the total is $450,000. The $287,000 to the general fund. There would have to be, we would actually do budget amendments to pull it from the various fund balances to fund it this, this year. So, this was that early year discussion that we had at the beginning of the meeting that we weren't able to finish. I, I would love to make a motion, say, we go ahead and fund, you know, give the employees an early 3% increase starting on March 19th for that.
Second. Second, there is discussion, okay. Conover?
Normally, the increase is, is planned for the beginning of the fiscal year, correct?
July 1st.
July.
Yes, sir.
And we want to, we're doing it, want to do it early. Is this something we're gonna try to do every year? Or, or work our way back to maybe where we can do it every January or?
I, I would be surprised if we did that all the time. You know, right now, we happen to have some extra money. Pay, pay has been an issue citywide right now. I think the timing's right to do it. It would probably be unlikely to do it all the time because your overall compensation is your biggest number.
Right.
And you gotta do your budget, you gotta balance your budget. And so, doing it too far ahead always, before you've counted all your chickens, you know, that, that might be dangerous as a, as an ongoing precedent.
I, I just don't want this to, to be assumed by the workers, you know, that, you know, this year, we're doing it in March. Next year, maybe they'll do it in July or, or maybe they'll do it in February. Is this is, this is a one-time, this year, we're gonna do it early. Because obviously, they deserve it and, and we have the funding.
Your, your point's very well taken. I would tell the workforce that, yes, you would normally think that this is going to start July 1st. That is, there have been, there were years, years ago, some that was actually delayed, but we didn't get it until September because there was a concern about the budget. We actually went the other way. But I think for 90% of the years that we've had budgeting increases, compensation increases, they would be July 1st. And that's true with all local governments, cities and counties, school boards. That's what you should expect as norm, not, not March pay.
Okay.
So, so for clarification purposes, what this actually is saying is, is that your manager's budget for this coming year will include a 3% pay increase for all employees, right? And we are just starting this early because we can, because we can financially afford it and because we've had several years in which we haven't been able to do as much for our, our employees as we would have liked to. And since now that we have this opportunity, we're going to extend this to the employees on this one-time basis.
Correct. And, and when you do this, it, it does kind of elbow out the others a bit. Because you always have to make a decision between equipment, between capital projects, between maintenance, between salaries. And every time you have a salary increase, the retirement, social security are all percentages of it. So, when we do it, we know what we're doing. That's why you don't always, you wouldn't always do this. But I think this is exactly as Councilman Curlin said. I think that's the way we, we should all explain it, that, that we can do it now. And because we were not able to do as much as we would like to have done the last few years, this allows us to, to deal with our employees. And as many of you have said, that's how we get our work done. And, and making sure that we take care of our employees and, and address that first, that's important.
I would just, I would just like to say that I, I'm really in favor of this. I think it's, I think it's important, if we do have a little bit of extra funding, to do this early, to show our city employees how much we appreciate them. I know there's many of them that have not had any sort of raise in several years. It's been a difficult economy. And, and if there's something that we can do to just say thank you, even if it's just a, you know, a couple extra paychecks, I'm in favor of that.
This doesn't have anything to do with the possible market studies you can agree with. You might make adjustments.
That's correct.
During the regular budget.
That's correct. Yeah, that, 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 that process is ongoing.
Ongoing, so that, that would not be part of it.
That's correct.
That would be actually for those employees that are hard to maintain.
Correct.
Fine.
Correct.
Next thing, what about the, I'm always for the little guy out there. One is picking up the trash, digging the ditch, putting in new water line that doesn't make a lot of money. Last year, we gave $1,000 to everybody, plus 1%. And so, that meant, meant a number of those guys in the lower, men who went in the lower level, got about 4, 5% which was not a whole lot, but compared to somebody that would get 3% of $100,000, which is maybe not a lot. But are we doing anything for, for like those lower categories? Because they know the grocery store just like I do and buy gas like I do. And I have concerns about the, about the little guy not, not getting as much. Because he's, he gets 3% of $25,750 and somebody else gets 3% of, of $80,000, that's 2,400. So, and I understand that, well, I just have a real concern for the little guy. So, are we doing anything that compensates for the little guy?
Yeah, the, I appreciate the, the question. The last two years, we have pushed dollars down at the, at the lowest air, level. And we've had a situation where we have put those percentages, and some of them have been pretty high, 4% or close to 4 and 1/2% for some of our employees where some of the other employees were getting 1%. And I think it was appropriate to do that coming out of the recession. The reason we'd like to return to just the, the traditional way is that that's all, what all our competitors are doing. We're the, we were the only ones for those two years that were doing that. And we were, we are, the way we made our pay for those two years was to push it down to the, the lowest, our, lowest of our employees. As we move forward into this post, hopefully, it's post-recession, that we are competing with everybody else who is giving 3% raises, 2 and 1/2% raises, things like that. So, when we're hiring our mid-level people and others, we have to be careful that we stay in, in sync. Each year, you get to do this again. But to the folks that, that, that you're talking about who, whose salaries are, are relatively low, we're also going to try, and we've been able to do this, and I think it's been lost on some, that we have held the insurance costs, we've not passed those on. And the insurance costs are coming to us for families. And we don't pass it on, we absorb it, the city does. We also have a, a wonderful clinic which allows their, our employees to be able to access that clinic. And that, that really helps many of our employees with, with modest incomes. So, one of the, I mean, we're certainly gonna try to do that. And I think we're, we'll continue to look at other kinds of things to, to help those at the very bottom of the scale as well. Porter, I appreciate, you know, I think the last two years, we did try to help out the little guy. I just think that the supervisors that are above them and stuff, they haven't gotten any kind of increase at all. And I think by doing a 3%, by doing a 3% across the board, I think it just helps out everybody because we've all struggled with this recession. And I think this is just gonna help them as well as anybody else in the organization.
Well, they got $1,000, everybody gets plus 1% for it.
And 1, and 1%, right.
That's pretty good. If you make a hundred grand, you got enough. If you get 2,000, so that was 10%.
Yeah, yeah. Year, year before, we did that, but, but only part of it was embedded in their pay. Last time, all of that was embedded in their pay. So, it permanently lifts those folks up.
Let me sort of piggyback on Conover's question, which was excellent. And it's not a thing that any of us and future councils and future council people and mayor, et cetera. You summed it up, and I think certainly he did too and people here. This is a little argumentative, but, and I'm not talking about any particular one situation. I'm talking about City of Gastonia. I look at the city as, just like I do a church. It's a business. If you have to write checks, I don't care what, it's what your purpose is. It's a business, whether it's a church, whether it's whatever. And in recessions and depression, we've all been through those. It depends on what comes in melody to the book. It depends on what, and, you know, responsible growth. Man, it can go all around you as it has done. But you, you take that subdivision, you take that hotel, you take this growth over here. Well, that's additional income every year. That's where your additional income, and that's why we can do this in situations as we grow downtown and any other thing that may happen long after us. It's, uh, that's part of using that ground out there responsibly. And, uh, but if it's just sitting there, it doesn't bring in any money for us. But now, if it's got a super nice home, or, I mean, a, a home, affordable home, or a, a business, it's additional money for the city coffers, the city budget and for certainly well-deserved employees, which we have. Okay, um, there's been a motion, and I think we're still on that discussion. Okay, we had a motion in the second, is that right?
It was the second.
Who was the second? I think it was Dr. Curlin. Yeah. Okay, any other questions, Conover? All in favor, please? And it is unanimous.
Thank you. With regard to health insurance, we are moving forward with that. I did have a law, a meeting with the county manager, talked about different ways we could work together because council asked us to do that. And possibly looking in the future about a partnership in, in terms of insurance and clinics and everything else. So, we're, that's not probably gonna happen this year, but we are looking at, at the feasibility of doing that. Also, the...
May I interrupt you?
Yes.
Was, was it discussed with you and the county manager? And I, I'm sorry, I'm so forgetful, but who brought this up? But is the possibility right behind your head over there, if they build, that there's gonna be a, a clinic there that maybe the city and the county could use and get, and expand more?
Right, and, and that gets to that fourth point, looking at opportunities with Caramont.
There it is.
And, and art space.
You're right.
Right. So, you know, that's in the offing, that's a couple of years away. But, but there's also conversations with Caramont, talking about where we go and perhaps their role in all of this as well.
Great, that, that's smart. There it is.
The, the next is the downtown sports and entertainment complex. On that first item, we've moved forward with the market and financial. We're actually doing an RFQ. You saw Odell's proposal, we'll have a couple others, and we'll try to get that turned around real quickly and back to council. We're also having meetings with some developers and, and we'll be able to report some further information on that as we go. UDO, that is moving forward, but nothing to report at this, at this point in time. The street encroachments, that is something engineering is working on and nothing to report at this time. The staffing for the small business advocate, Flip Bombardier and I have been working on that. And we have got, we've put together some rough outline of a, a little bit of a reorganization and restructuring to, to address some of the things we talked about. And we'll try to bring that to the council in the next couple, next month or two. Loray Mill Village Plan, that is moving forward. You're gonna see some of those projects maybe in the budget. You'll certainly see them at the budget outlook. Now, again, how much of this survives? And also, we, how can we move this to other neighborhoods? And, you know, and we're gonna, you know, working with community development. Community development funds, some of them have been into housing projects. It's taken awfully long time to do. And there, there are some funds available in, in prior year community development dollars that we'll be able to maybe move forward into improvements in neighborhoods, community development neighborhoods, low-income neighborhoods that are easier to get done, sidewalks and things like that. So, we are, we are working on trying to restructure some of the community development budget to, to address that.
Excuse me, Ed. Go ahead.
Ed, I just have a question on the police substation at, at the mill, at Firestone? The police substation to the west? Any, any report on that at all? I was actually at Loray today, and I asked Billy Hughes that, that question. They, because of the, the, the conflict with the, not conflict, I guess, the litigation, is that right? Or the, what's the proper term, you think?
I think there were some liens filed.
Yeah, the liens. They're resolving those liens and because with Centurion, the, they had filed, and I think maybe some of the subs. And that is tying up those dollars to be able to move forward. But Billy said that he thinks within the next couple of weeks that that should all be resolved. He said, and then we're moving right away on the police station. So, I believe... I went around back the other day to check it out, and they have the windows all in. And they just have to do the knockout work inside. It's ready to go. They're at 80% occupancy. They also have a brew pub that's, that's been announced, that, the Growler. And that, that is, that's gonna be there as well as, you know, their, their, their facility with the, the exercise facility that's already there. So, they're, they're beginning to take some steps forward. And the pool looks really nice. I went, I went there, you could go in the back, you could walk around. It's really nice. Yeah, and, and we're also looking at Loray Mill as the, as a, a potential or I would say the potential location for the incubator that the county has funded. That, that the Gigabit incubator, that's what we're really trying to do, everything we can to get that located at Loray. And Dr. Hanon is involved with that and a number of others, and Mark Kramer with the, the GGDC. The next item was the, the tag fee discussion. And the council asked us to investigate how early that could be done. The statute actually calls for no earlier than July 1st. So, that, that, that state statute settles it. So, July 1st would be the, the first opportunity for that. And so, that'll be something that we'll put into the budgetary process. And all those funds and any, any of those new funds will be 100% into local city street maintenance, not for any other use. Police body cameras, again, discussing the issue with the county. This is the next page. They're probably not gonna go forward this year, but we talked to them on it. But I talked to Earl about trying to make the decision that the city and the county and the sheriff, all of us use similar cameras, similar system, all go at one time, economies of scale. And he, he, he supported that, so, but probably not this year for the county. Now, it, there, as, as years pass, the, if the county doesn't go, the city may go earlier. I mean, that's a decision this city council, all city councils in the United States are discussing that right now. And, and also the legislature, I was at a meeting in, in Raleigh where they reviewed what's coming up with the legislature. They have a study committee, and there may be additional legislation dealing with the body cameras. So, that, that could change and hopefully help the situation, particularly in terms of storage and clarification about when those things are used and when they're not. Next is solid waste. That first item looked to extend the contract for the county for landfill tipping fees. We have approached county staff and talked about it. I also shared with Earl our desire to soon enter into a longer-term agreement with them. And so, that, that conversation has been initiated. And the spillover and negotiating the existing service, with existing service provider for recycling as first option, that is going... service with existing service provider for recycling as first option, that is going on. Michael Peoples is coordinating that. Uh, but what I'm passing out to you is review of other cities' solid waste fees and taxes. So we put this little report together, a survey based upon, uh, what other cities in our county and some of the other cities around us in North Carolina. We didn't put the South Carolina cities down because the state statutes all different and everything, but what we did is try to show you their, their tax rate, their vehicle tag rate and their solid waste fee. Now their solid waste and, and the vehicle tag rate's gonna be moving with everybody now that the legislature has provided it. See, we had a fifteen dollar authorization special to us. Many cities didn't have any, you know, they, they, they had five dollars, I think was the general statute, uh, regulation, or the, that's what they allowed. Now, as you can see, the solid waste fee is all over the place. Uh, we highlighted the, the three, uh, in red here. Mecklenburg County, they actually do it annually and they attach it to the tax bill. Uh, so it's a whole different approach and it's an, like twenty-five dollars annually. You know, that's not anywhere near what, you know, and, and if you read in the newspaper, they are talking about actually pulling the service back from apartments and condominiums. They have always been serving it, now they're not. But if you see, some cities have no fee at all. Some cities have eleven dollar fees and thirteen dollar fees and five. So this is to be discussed. I, I think during our budget hearings and, and that's, this is something that the council asked for information as to what other cities are doing. Uh, next airport, um, to begin negotiations with the FBO, uh, including performance standards. And it was a really good transportation committee meeting. There'll be a report on this later. We expect a bridge contract just to take us to the end of the year at the next city council meeting. And so I think with the transportation committee, we'll get a little more report on that. And, uh, Martha Rivers Park, we are looking into that. That also has budget implications. So that will be, uh, feeling, bringing that back to you. Transit, we're moving forward on that study. Technology park expansion. Uh, there is movement there. Uh, property owners have approached and there's been discussions with the county against city-county venture might happen, might be able to put properties together for that, but it's not, it's, it's not here yet. Uh, that probably is, uh, another couple months away, but it will probably come this fiscal year in terms of a decision for us as opposed to next fiscal year. Again, lots of, lots of dollar signs.
It's, it's full, the tech park?
Our tech park is, is virtually full. There's a couple more, oh, there's a couple more parcels available. Uh, the spec building is, is under construction. There's actually some land that's available between Biggerstaff Park and the tech park that is not owned by the county, but, uh, the agreement with the Paceur family was that, and there's really nowhere else for that land to go, but to come to, uh, the, uh, tech park and the advanced manufacturing buildings going forward. So we are, we are filling up the tech park. So this is the idea of trying to get kind of tech park two, uh, another, another, more, more land to be able to have a place for businesses to locate. And the donation boxes, that, that is regulations will come back to us too. But that's a, that's just a brief summary of, of some of the things that have been going on since our last meeting.
Ed, can-
Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Yes.
Can I go back, um, just for a second to Loray Mill? Was there any discussion on how the, um, retail rental spaces are going? I mean, are they coming along with that? I'm, I'm hearing good things on the, um, the residential aspect, but what about the retail space?
Yeah. Uh, uh, that, the, the good, the good news is, is, you know, they, some time ago, they, they got the exercise or the, the fitness, uh, facility in there. Uh, but the news that they got the, the brew pub in there, uh, that, that is, that's the first, that's, that's the first retail space after that. And, and Bob explained, Bob Clay, who is the, the, uh, commercial real estate person, that they really needed to see eighty percent occupancy before they would sign the lease. There is always a relationship in development between residential development and commercial. The more households you get around or the more rooftops or the, in this case, apartments that you can fill are customers. And so oftentimes a Realtor or a, excuse me, a, um, a, a business, a retail business will say, well, if there's so many rooftops or so many apartments, then I'll sign the lease. And it was an eighty percent threshold and when they hit that, then they got that. Now, once you get this, this one, I mean, you know, i- it's getting the first couple that's hard and you gotta lease up the building. So really, probably the most optimism that I, you know, that we've had in a good long while with Loray. I mean, I think they're moving forward and it's a big step forward. Cause that, it's, the Growler's also located in, um, um, south of Charlotte in, in Ballantyne and it's a franchise and, uh, that is a restaurant. And so when you bring restaurants, things like that into it, of course, they have that restaurant in the front, that space which will develop, that will bring other uses. So I think, I think we should be very optimistic about what's going on there.
That's the old office building you're talking about? That's out front of-
Yeah, right.
Now that's gonna be a restaurant?
That's slated, that was slated for a restaurant.
Because it looks like they, they fixed it all up. It's really nice. I mean, yeah, they put a roof on it.
Yep. They're, they're looking for a coffee shop right now. They're trying to be selective as to the kind of use in the mix there, but, uh, I think Bob Clay feels very good about where, where we're heading and, uh, they all wish it had been done quicker, of course, you know, but, 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 uh, it's, it's moving along nicely now.
But where is, where is our commitment right now with the space that we committed to in terms of, you know, how, how did the, how does the leasing of these spaces, what's the priority or the pecking order of that where we start to get some relief from what our commitment is?
The, the, what we've agreed to is the city and the county and the, and the, and the owner have pulled all of our square footage. And every time some of the square footage is then subleased or leased to a, an entity, then there's relief back proportionately based upon our square footage. So that as that occurs, then our, our payments are reduced.
Okay.
Now, when it comes to, uh, the, uh, incubator, to get a high-tech incubator there to be competitive, we may not reduce ours for that. That may be worth our while to get that in that building because that has such a multiplier effect. The county is paying the money. They're paying, they've set aside nine hundred thousand dollars for over the next three years for that. So that's something that we may want to encourage because of the multiplier effect of, of that.
Why would that not renew, reduce our portion of that?
Pardon?
Why would that not reduce our commitment? If, if we've already got funding for it, why would we be paying, still paying for it if it's empty?
Yeah. We, we're paying it now anyway.
Correct.
There, there are, there are-
Does that relieve our funding?
That what?
If we're getting, uh, funding from the county for three years for that, would that not relieve our payment and demand?
No, they're, the county's funding is going for the operation of this. They're using the hospital money, you know, they provided some of the hospital money to the, to the cities and to the, there's township grants, but there's more money that they have assigned other places. And, and one of the other places was to this, this, um, uh, incubator. Uh, they had the incubator, business incubator and, and the Gigabit. And, and, and so they're looking for a location for it. And so what I'm saying is at the end of the day, to make Loray the preferred alternative, we may want to do everything we can to get them here because it's a nonprofit. It's not a, uh, a regular business. This could be different. This could, this, this is something that really might make a big difference, you know, in terms of bringing other people into the heart of the city of Gastonia.
You're saying it might need some additional subsidy?
Yes. And, and, and the, for the simple, well, the simplest one is that we wouldn't, we, we, we wouldn't get the relief for that five thousand square feet or our, our percentage of that five thousand square feet, which is they're looking at. But we don't have that proposal before us. But it's something that, that as it gets, as it gets developed, that we might wanna consider. Because you really do wanna get a business, a, a high-tech business incubator in the heart of the city of Gastonia, in, in West Gastonia, right on, you know, that would be really good. So we wanna make, uh, that our alternative, the very best alternative, I think, in the county. It's concrete.
No, I get it.
Were you, were you asking that, that we would be subsidizing that and not the county?
Yeah.
Uh, from the, from the square footage standpoint, from the lease stand foot, standpoint?
Right. What, what I was saying was, you know, we're responsible for so many square feet. And they're saying, well, the incubator would go in there and the county's paying for this for three years. So in my mind, I'm thinking, oh, great, that frees us up from having to pay that.
Right.
But then it says, but we might wanna consider. I'm like, why would we pay it if the county's paying? I didn't realize that we'd basically be paying down their lease rate to, to make it more affordable for that to go in there.
And I, and I think the developer is also making concessions to try to help get that bit, that operation there because of the spinoff effects.
This would just be on our part, an incentive to bring it there. Correct?
Yeah. And the jobs that are associated.
Right.
Right.
Uh, that, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Um, moving along, item ten, the transportation committee report, Mayor pro tem Todd Pierceall chairman, and that's exhibit ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of items in the report have already been discussed, so we might be able to make this a little bit quicker. Uh, item number one was an update on the Gastonia Municipal Airport. And, uh, the tenure term contract between the City of Gastonia and Fly Carolina LLC, the fixed base operator, also known as an FBO, uh, expires on March fifteenth. And, uh, with council direction, the staff will continue negotiating a contract extension with amendments with Fly Carolina LLC and present at the next transportation committee meeting. The existing contract with Fly Carolina LLC will be extended through June two thousand and sixteen. Uh, staff recommended conducting an inventory inspection of current leased hangar units to confirm that all hangars are being used to house operational aircraft or at minimum aircraft that are undergoing active restoration. The staff also needs to review and update current contract language for the hangar leases. Uh, some, some more studies going on, but the, uh, committee directed staff to prepare a long-range plan to present at the next transportation committee meeting along with an updated contract. And that's where we stand now. Um, like I mentioned earlier, the current contract expires on March fifteenth and, uh, they are doing an extension of that until June so that, uh, it just kinda gives them more time to put together the long-range, long-range plans that they need to work on that. So we'll hear more about that, probably not at our next council meeting, but, uh, probably next month. At the earliest, we'll get that back to us. Um, any questions on that? I think I saw, yeah, Michael Peoples is here. Is there any questions regarding the airport?
Questions?
Okay.
All right. Item number two was an update on the Gastonia Transit Study. Uh, Cherry Consulting of the Carolinas was chosen to perform the ridership survey, uh, count, review of current route structure, determine proper bus size, fuel type, consideration of other methods to offer for public transportation, as well as combine transit system with Gaston County access and identify overall efficiency improvements. The fee for this service is sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. The project kickoff meeting is scheduled for March seventh and should conclude in the fall with a presentation of the findings to the transportation committee and city council. Uh, this was a very in-depth, long discussion. We had members from Cherry Consulting there, two members that, um, answered any questions we really had, uh, not only from us, but from staff. So it was very, very productive. And, uh, as you heard and what I read there, they're gonna be basically looking at our entire bus system and making suggestions on what can be improved, what we can change, what we can do from top to bottom. So it's gonna be a very, very in-depth study and we look forward to hearing from them. Very, very knowledgeable people. This is what they do. Years and years of experience. Their credentials were great. So we're looking forward to that. But, uh, the presentation is basically provided for informational purposes and we don't need any action. No action was needed from the committee. Uh, item number three was a follow-up. Uh, we had requested earlier, uh, from staff to, uh, do estimates on what it would cost to put utilities, uh, out to Paceur Mountain. Uh, should anything come up that we would like to put out there, as you know, uh, I believe it was that the transportation committee, uh, when, uh-
Graham Bell.
Yeah, Mr. Bell came out and spoke to us, um, about extending the road out there and how it would be definitely beneficial and, uh, certainly help the aspect of a road if something else were out there, such as a business or technology park. And obviously we've all looked at Paceur Mountain for years on what we could do with that. So, uh, staff got down on, uh, got to work right away on that and came back and, uh, the information was jaw dropping. Uh, electrical, to run electrical out to Paceur Mountain would be twelve million. It'd be eight point five million for transmission and distribution and three point five million for a new substation. Uh, water would be eleven point seven million. That would include new tank and pump station. Sewer would be either six point nine million if we went with the gravity sewer following the creek or four point six million if a pump station and force main were added. Uh, total utility costs would range between twenty-eight point three million and thirty point six million. Um, I don't think I need to tell anybody in here spending thirty million dollars on something that may or may not eventually go out there. It's not something we're gonna tackle right now. Uh, so the committee, uh, accepted this as information and made no recommendations on moving with that any further. But you know, now we know. So if, uh, somebody can go out there and shake the bushes and give us, get us a good tenant that would like to make a home out at Paceur Mountain, maybe we'll review these costs again. But until that time, I, I think we're, uh, putting that on the back burner. Uh, item number four was an update on high-speed rail from Charlotte to Atlanta. Uh, this is really just informational purposes only. Uh, we're down to, uh, I say we, but it's really the federal government is down to three routes, all of which go through Gastonia. So we just got a, an update on that. Um, and item number five was federally funded sidewalk projects. Now, this does require a vote and basically in two thousand and thirteen, there were three projects submitted, large sidewalk projects. Um, as those grew closer and cost estimates were re, revisited, just as we heard earlier tonight with things changing in the construction industry, it was, uh, became very apparent that all three of those were not gonna be able to be done. Um, they were submitted in the STIP program through the NCDOT. So, uh, it was recommended that two of those be pulled and those monies be placed into the one that had the most priority, which is the sidewalk along Franklin Boulevard. You probably all know the section I'm talking about. It runs along, uh, where the, um, what's the burger place there at Home Depot?
Cookout.
Cookout. Cookout. And, uh, it probably happened to you guys before you, you're driving down, somebody steps out in the road because you, there's nowhere to go. There's a guard around the creek. Um, this would be that portion of sidewalk, uh, definitely would help with pedestrian traffic going down there, using that Franklin corridor with all the stores. Um, so it, it just seemed like a really easy decision. So the committee voted unanimously three zero to recommend that the city council implement the Franklin Boulevard sidewalk project by canceling the Cox Road and New Hope Road projects and transferring funding to the Franklin Boulevard project. Um, I would also like to just go ahead and make that in the form of a motion for the council here to go ahead and improve, uh, approve that, uh, change as well.
Second to the motion.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Tom, please, second.
Any questions on why, uh, that was done or the two projects that were canceled?
Where on Cox Road and New Hope Road are they canceling them out?
The one on Cox Road, uh, if I'm not mistaken, was, um, probably Rusty. Is Rusty still here? Rusty, you can probably answer this better than me, but the one on Cox Road would probably be affected by, uh, any type of widening with eighty-five anyway. So why spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to put in a new sidewalk when a couple of years down the road's gonna get ripped up?
Uh, Councilman Pierceall is absolutely right. Both the New Hope and the Cox Road-
Uh, Councilman Pierceall is absolutely right. Both the New Hope and the Cox Road sidewalks, uh, involved ID five. We know ID five widening is, is fast approaching, so there was another component there about pouring new sidewalk and then five years later having it torn up with that widening project.
Yes, you're, you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars. It would be in use for a couple of years, maybe tops, so.
No, it, it's definitely needed over there by cookout. There's no doubt about it.
Any other questions?
Just a, a brief comment. I've had several, um, residents talking about how hard it is and unsafe it is to walk on Franklin Boulevard and especially the areas we're talking about here. So, I mean, absolutely, I think that is a, a smart move for us to make.
And this would go all, it'll extend us all the way out to the city limit there.
Right.
So, big, big section of sidewalk.
Any other comments? Faith, there's a motion and, and made and seconded, all in favor, please, raise your hand. Thank you. It is unanimous.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And we've got one more, um, item. Item number six, uh, basically was other matters. We had general obligation bond project update, Franklin Boulevard from six to five lanes and the Cox Road traffic study. And, uh, a lot of this was answered earlier with the mayor's question, uh, the Myrtle School widening, the Tipton Road, the New Hope Union Road. All those are widening projects. Uh, the Franklin Boulevard is the study. As you know, Franklin Boulevard in and out, in and out, goes from five lanes to six lanes to five lanes to six lanes, back and forth, back and forth with turn lanes periodically. Uh, the study being done there is all of Franklin Boulevard would go down to five lanes. And where necessary, you'd have the, um, turn lanes. So we got a report on that and then also the, uh, Cox and Franklin traffic study. So, uh, we just got updates on that, didn't require any action or votes. And you do have that information in your report as well.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the Union Road widening project, um, where does that stand and is there any funding for it or?
I'm going to turn that back over to Mr. Boss, best to answer that because we, there's a lot of different things going on with every one of these projects.
So, so with the, uh, the GeoBond projects, uh, we ran into some, some issues with some projects coming in above, uh, expected budgets. Um, and, and we were essentially borrowing money from Union Road to, to get, uh, Myrtle School and Tipton under construction. Um, we're about one point three million short on Union Road right now. So, uh, instead, the option was to take the money that we still do have remaining, probably about five million dollars or so. Um, commit that to that project, um, apply it to have DOT, because it is a DOT street, have DOT widen it. Our committing that funding to the project, um, increases the cost effectiveness of DOT, uh, for DOT, uh, which means it scores a lot better. So whereas before it might not score so well because DOT was shouldering the entire cost, now it would probably score very well. Uh, and so we've submitted that to DOT and we're waiting to hear back on the spot ranking of that and where it falls.
When would we hear back? Rusty answer that?
I apologize. I honestly don't know.
Do we, do we need to know the president of, you know, MPO or something like that?
I, I, I have an inside line with him, but I'll.
Okay. Make sure you take it up with him. Tell him it's from the City Council of Gastonia.
Excuse me. When Rusty's talking about a possible shortfall, I mean, we don't know yet because we still have to let the contract on, uh, South New Hope. And so once all of that is done, and we don't know what the final cost will be on Union, but it appears that that's the case. And so by doing this, we're really, uh, working with the state and the state is helping. And really, these are state roads and this is really the state's responsibility. And the fact that we're making this contribution is, it's a good collaboration. And we really actually hope the state does the work.
Yes.
Right, as opposed to us.
Easier to let them do it than work with them.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Hate to say it, but let, just, just let them control it. Don't even try to do a collaboration. Just hand them the money and tell them to do it. You're way better off, so. Okay, no other, thank you, Rusty. Uh, with no other questions, that concludes the transportation report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney's Report, item eleven.
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, sir. Item twelve, City Manager's Report.
Council, uh, Michael has three things to do, right? That he wanted to share and, uh, he could address. I'll try to be brief. Just wanted to let you know a few things. We have an email lined up to come to you tomorrow and that's going to be coming from Tech Services, probably from Ray Cardiac. And that will prepare you to, uh, download the outage management system for the electric and the water and sewer department. Could have used it Wednesday. We actually used it internally. And, um, it would have been nice to have been able to push that out to yourselves and the customers, but, uh, just now getting to that point. So, March fifteenth, we'll have a presentation on that, uh, the televised meeting. So hopefully some of the customers out there will be able to pick that up. It'll be available in the Play Store for them to download on their smartphone as well. So I just wanted to let you know that real quick. Uh, if you're driving by ROs on the way to Franklin, you may have seen some peculiar blue lights shining on the walkways through the underpass. Those have recently been installed. We've been working on that project for about.
At the railroad, railroad bridge, the Southern Railway Bridge.
Correct.
Not, not at ROs, but at the railway bridge.
Not at ROs.
You, you left out the railroad bridge part. You said at ROs.
Right there at the bridge.
Thought I would clarify that.
Right at the underpass. So we do have some white LED vehicular lighting, but then some blue LED lighting on the, the passenger walkways. So that's recently been completed. We're going to have another, uh, two projects, some landscaping and some retaining walls from Public Works, uh, worked on there too, to try to beautify that whole area. So that was the second thing. The third thing, uh, we've installed thirteen lights at three twenty-one and eighty-five to help, uh, improve the lighting around that area. So, uh, there were nine replaced and three additional lights, or four additional lights installed there. So if you're in that area, take a look and see if that's been improved. We were not able to install any additional poles. We were just able to install them on the poles that existed. Uh, and then the, the last thing, some more LED lighting for you. Uh, you probably, uh, remember a couple of months ago, we talked about, uh, trying to accomplish some of the major corridor areas around the business areas. So we've started that work. There's a total of one hundred and sixty-two lights that we're going to be installing. And right now, we've installed some on, um, Aberdeen from Remount to Franklin. And then we'll start on the major corridors from, uh, Cox to Franklin or, or on Cox from Franklin up to, uh, uh, Court Drive and then South New Hope, uh, uh, right there at the mall too. So hopefully we have all those lights in stock. So hopefully we'll be able to finish that really within about two or three weeks, hopefully. So if you see a lot of lighting going on.
Since we're talking about LED lights and lighting, would it be possible sometime, I don't know, we're in March now, so let's say by the end of the month. So we're not going into April, into Easter. Would it be possible to get the two snowflakes on Broad Street taken down?
Well, actually, you know, th- those are there to observe. Uh, this is because our, what, our old, li- li- right?
I've taken pictures and sent them to Sam Welch and said, did we just miss those two?
No.
But yet.
No, what, what happened was the, the old Christmas decorations have seen better days and they're beginning to fail. So these were two different options to look at.
I noticed the snowflakes were different.
That's right. So everyone was supposed to look at those to say, well, which one did they like better?
Have we done that yet?
I believe we have. So it's probably, yes, it's probably.
I think we're going into Easter, so either put up some bunnies or something, but let's.
It's time to, it, yes.
Time to take the snowflake.
I think it's time to take them down. Yes. But that, that was the, is something after Christmas.
They did go up after, so I figured there was a purpose, but we're going into March now and I'm like.
That's right.
Yeah, probably need to start taking it, because people say, y'all don't even take your decorations down.
Yes, everybody drive by tonight on the way home and let us know which one.
They're there. You can see them.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, dude.
And that's all.
All right. City Council reports, uh, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a, a few things here. First, uh, I was just really privileged to be a part of a, a meeting that, uh, Councilman Gallagher had set up the other night with, um, some concerned citizens who, um, reside around the Acres Center property. And, um, I thought it was a really good meeting, really ran well. A lot of good expression and ideas and what struck me the most was how excited and how engaged these folks are. You know, we hear a lot of stories about how, uh, residents and people are not engaged in their neighborhoods. These people really are, so that's really, um, really a positive thing. Um, I'm excited this weekend. I'm finally going to the, um, essentials of municipal government training. Um, I believe the last one, um, if you all remember that whole week I was sick. Um, so I, I'm just thankful and excited to be going to that. And, uh, finally, just a reminder to, to vote. Um, we have primaries coming up here in North Carolina. We are lucky enough to have early voting. However we vote, whoever we want in there, it's a, a privilege that we need to take seriously. And I think we all understand as elected officials, um, sometimes looking at those tally numbers, how disappointing it is, um, the number of people that don't exercise that right. Um, so, um, anything that we can do to help people, um, vote, um, gosh, it's a, it, it's something that should be near and dear to all of us. So, uh, uh, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Curly.
Uh, no report.
Hey, Mr. Pierceall. I mean, uh, Gallagher, this is.
Yeah. Don't jump over me. I got five, I have five things to go through here.
I thought he might say.
Saturday night, went to the Fireman's Ball. Chief, it was excellent. Good time. Thank you. Uh, was there with Councilman, uh, McAtir and his lovely wife and, and also Travis. He did an excellent thing. Also, um, participated in something I never participated before in Gastonia and never thought I would. I participated on Saturday morning with shred day. If you've never done that, um, right now Charmaine and I are empty nesters, so we went up in the attic. We were cleaning out everything and we got a bunch of paperwork that was up there that was just old and we just brought it down and we went to shred day. Uh, at the farmer's market, you just drive around, you give them your, um, stuff and they throw it in the, the big shredder that they got there. And it's all confidential and it's all stuff that gets shredded. It was excellent, excellent thing. And, uh, uh, my Councilman Curly here's, uh, wife was running the whole thing over there. She did a great job, Nan. Um, also, um, Electric Cities is advertising, um, Gastonia's, uh, building that's being, uh, specked out to fifty thousand square feet. Um, they send out this brochure, um, or they go out to different, um, economic developments and stuff and they actually, uh, put our building in here. So hopefully we'll get somebody in there. Um, the, uh, the other thing is, uh, gentlemen, Robert and I participated in the Acres Center and that was excellent. Um, Councilman Kellogg, that was really, really, thank you for coming. The neighbors weren't there with pitchforks and they weren't trying to, you know, it, they were just really helpful in trying to get this done. And we hope to meet with DC, uh, DLC, um, coming up next week. They're coming into Charlotte and we're going to try to get them out here to look at Acres Center and show them what, uh, Gaston Mall looks like and then find out where they, where they're at. Also, um, the nurses dorm that's over at Dixon Road and New Hope South, um, spoke to, um, Dewey Armstrong and also Kathy Harrington. Kathy Harrington said that the state, this is unique property, uh, the state actually owns the land, but the county leased it for a hundred years for like a dollar a year or so. Um, so Kathy said that we have to go to the county to find out who, uh, who they have to see in the state to, uh, give that land, that section of land back. Now, if they give that section of land back and the state gives it to North Carolina Preservation and they give it to that guy Dewey Armstrong, who did the hospital and also, uh, Armstrong Apartments over here, um, it'll put it back in the tax rolls. And he says he's paying twenty-two thousand dollars a year just for the Armstrong Apartments and property taxes. And he wants to make the nurses dorm not, uh, residence, but he wants to make it into, um, uh, office building and have, uh, ask, well, he's going to make a proposal to, um, partners to see if they would come on board. If we can get them on board with that, uh, this will be a go and we could save a, a nice historic building. Uh, Ed was telling me today that, um, the, the Orthopedic Hospital, at one time, there's a photo out there of President, uh, Roosevelt. Coming there to the hospital on his way down to, um, uh, Warm Springs, Georgia. And he actually stopped there and was at the hospital here in Gastonia. That's, that's remarkable. So, um, we're, we're going to see if we get that whole site, um, designated, um, a historical national treasure. But, and that's my report.
Let me, uh, let me follow up that may, may possibly help a tad and speed things up on that one. I don't know this little fact, but I was certainly told many times years ago that, um, that is a hundred dollars, like a dollar a year for a hundred years. The, the, we having a motorcycle, a meeting here? Uh, anyway, they, um, uh, I was going to tell you that the, uh, the person that, that I understand that is almost solely responsible for doing that was, uh, Speaker of the House Carl Stewart, which has got an office right there. And, uh, so he probably would remember, even though it was years ago, he did that for, for Gaston County. I mean, he helped get that done. And, and I don't know where he handled it, whatever he did, I don't know. I wasn't around, I mean, to know that then, but that was years ago. He was Speaker, what, in the nineties, maybe something?
Maybe even before.
Hmm?
Yeah, earlier, I think.
Earlier?
Yeah.
I was giving him a little benefit of the doubt. Okay. I just, 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 uh, you know, he's, he's right there and I'm certainly would be glad to help. Pierceall.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick things. One was I did attend the, uh, Alzheimer Walk Meeting, uh, filled in for the mayor. More than happy to do that. Um, very good, uh, educational meeting.
I think, by the way, that we do have a project about soundproofing the, the windows.
Correct. We did get an estimate.
Yeah, we have, now, we're, I think we're developing those prices, so that'll be one of the things to, to consider.
Yeah, and, and, and we did already review the estimate for replacing these windows to make them soundproof, so.
I'm sorry.
Looking forward to that and probably more than me is, uh, our attorney who.
I think we're going to have enough money for the first four.
Got, got ball, the ball. The first four will be one, two, three, four, right there. Nonetheless, um, I, I did attend that meeting on behalf of the mayor and a very ca- very educational meeting. Um, and they will be having their fall walk and, uh, they'll be circulating more educational material about that. So I was, uh, pleased to be there and learn about that. Also, uh, to piggyback on what Robert said about voting, very, 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 very important, you get to the polls. Not just to vote for your favorite candidate, but there's also a bond package being offered. Uh, this is Connect NC and just in our area, to let you know how it impacts us, there's, I want to say it's about six million dollars going to Gaston College. And there's another seven hundred and fifty thousand that'll be going to Crowder's Mountain State Park. And I know, I think it's Councilman Gallagher that talked about the parking out there.
That was actually Councilman Humphries.
Okay, the lack of, this would, this is money that's going to be going to improving part of the park, uh, parking situation and stuff. But, um, the way certain, I'm trying to be politically correct here. The way certain things have been cut in the state's budget, especially with our higher education in the colleges, uh, has left a lot of things unintended to and lacking. This is a way to, a little more inexpensively for the state to put these things back in and make up for what we've lost. So very important and I would encourage every resident to go and vote for this bond package. So, uh, make sure you keep that on your radar. Other than that, I was out of circulation for about a week and a half, so I don't have much to report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. McAtir.
Yes, sir. I also went to shred day, but I went to Hunter Husk and I went last year. You just drive right in. I was, somebody right in front of me was finishing up, didn't take but a second or two. Also encourage, I know, uh, Councilman Gallagher goes to the ARC Annual Shin Dig. They're having that at the Conference Center, uh, Saturday night. And I encourage anybody to consider going to that. It's a, a good fundraising project for, for that, uh, organization. That's Saturday night. You can, uh, go down to United Way Bill and see Ms. Orsman and get your tickets. Uh, I encourage you to go if you can go. That's it.
Is it hazardous waste this Saturday?
Yes, it is.
Disposal is this Saturday?
That's right.
Yeah. That's that bigger staff.
I, I did want to mention.
That I got a report on shred day and found out that we have a document hoarder amongst us. The report was that Mr. Gallagher likes to store documents for way, way, way.
The report was that Mr. Gallagher likes to store documents for way, way, way longer than they need to be and that attic was full.
It was because the IRS, they audit you, they have, they'll do it for seven years if they really want it thick.
But not 15 years and 20 years. Just thought I'd throw that in there, that shred day came at the perfect time so that his ceilings didn't collapse.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to commend a, a city employee. You, Mr. Mayor, you sent a letter out, Mr. Stephen Shannon, for going way above and beyond his duty on Christmas Eve, helping out Mr. Johnson with a tree that had fallen. Mr. Shannon took it upon himself to, without contacting anybody else, talked to Mr. Johnson, went, picked up the right equipment, came back on his own with Mr. Johnson and they took care of getting the tree, most of it moved, so it was, the streets were passable. He did this on his own, didn't call anybody else in on Christmas Eve and his family's at home waiting on him. So, that's, further shows the caliber of people that we have, we're lucky to have as part of our family in the city. It's really a job well done. I too want to urge everybody to vote for the Connect NC. That 750,000 for Crowder's Mountain is, if you've ever been there on a beautiful Saturday and expecting to pull apart and go walk and you sit in your car for hours, it gets pretty hot. A lot of people do that every weekend and a lot of people leave. So, that, that, other than the monies that are going to the National Guard facilities that are getting enhanced or built and also Gaston College, that's a direct help for us, this, this money is pretty important. And from what I understand about reading it, it will not cause your income taxes to increase. It's, it's just, the state has to have a referendum to borrow the money, but it's not going to cost us any more. And finally, please remember all of our troops from Gastonia and North Carolina that are stationed all over the world. Get them back home safe. Mr. Martin, one question for you. Does the city have any kind of awards program? Monthly, quarterly, yearly, anything like that?
Like employee, the employee of the.
Similar, yeah. Anything like that?
The individual departments have some awards and that, but the city over, city overall does not. So, you, you have, you have some individual awards by department, but not, not a, not a, an awards program overall.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, gentlemen. It's, I need, need to go home and study for my legacy in the morning. I'm going back a second time to read Dr. Seuss' book in kindergarten and, you know, that's the one last year you may remember that they asked all the questions, how much I made and where our office was, but then the real question was, well, how old are you? And then I said it and they said, ooh. I, I.
You're amazed of it.
Yeah. Amazed myself then. So, I'm getting, I'm going back for more torture in the morning. And I, thank you for going to the Alzheimer. I forgot. I was, we were visiting a grandson and everything was lovely until the city manager called me and told me that a tree was down in my driveway and don't come home because it couldn't get in. So, had to, had to get that taken care of. So, I didn't like, I don't like pine trees that much anyways.
Well, actually, that's the reason. I think the tree fell, but I'm not calling any, I didn't call any name now, Councilor. I didn't say anything.
The tree, the tree went down really, really nicely. It didn't hit a car, the house. It didn't take the electric line out. It just dropped.
Just dropped.
Just dropped.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Thank you very much and I appreciate everyone being here. At 7:40, did anyone have a comment or anything they would like to make? We didn't have any public expression that they, they could, wanted to before we left? Okay, is there a motion to lead?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay.